Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission and Landmark Committee meetings for Tuesday, May 6, 2025. I welcome any community members who are in the audience and those who are watching at home. Mr. Secretary, will you please take roll call?
Commissioner Vandermeulen.
Present.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Edsall.
Here.
Vice Chair Davidson.
Here.
Chair Lamont.
Here. Thank you. And can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And Commissioner Vandermeulen, will you please lead us?
Thank you. It already began. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, our next item is on the agenda is a consent calendar. These are items considered general business. They're acted upon together without discussion unless an item is pulled for discussion. Are there any items that commissioners would like to pull for discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Great, thank you.
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Edsall and seconded by Commissioner Murphy. You please call the vote.
Commissioner Edsall?
Here. I mean, yes.
Vice Chair Davidson?
Yes.
Chair Lamont?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandermeulen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. The next item is public comment for items that are not listed on tonight's agenda. This is a time for members of the public to address any matter to the Planning Commission that does not appear on the regular item. Do we have any speakers? Okay, seen none. I close the public comment and we'll proceed to the next item. The public hearing is now open. We have one item for consideration on the, well, the first item for consideration is update to the general plan safety element. This is continuation from our last meeting on March 18. Is there any member of the public desiring to speak on this item? If so, please complete a card and present it to the clerk. Do we have a report on this item?
Yes, thank you, Chair Lamont. This item will be presented by Lexi Journey with Brighton Khan Consultants.
Yes.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for having me here today. I am back here with you to present the changes that were made to the safety element based on the feedback that we heard at the commission hearing recently, a couple months ago. So I'm going to give a quick presentation on the various feedback that we heard, just to summarize at a very high level what we heard from Planning Commission, and then talk about how that feedback was addressed within the safety element context and within the policies themselves, and then I give a quick review of the timeline of the safety element and the next steps. So even though you were all here and provided great feedback on the safety element, wanted to give a quick overview of what that included and what myself and staff heard in terms of what needed to be updated in the safety element. So to start, a feedback was that the safety element needed to have a better connection to the city's socio-demographic data as well as reference to county evacuation responsibilities. And then the commission also wanted to add more reference to vulnerable populations and critical facilities, specifically medical providers and schools throughout the element and specifically in regards to evacuation. We also heard that the safety element needed to include more policies regarding community emergency response resource provision such as mutual aid, community effort response protocols, education, and the city to support NGO coordination. And then we also heard to create separate objectives for both drought, air quality, and extreme heat issues within the policies of the safety element. And lastly, to have reference in the policies to personal protective equipment, other known as PPE for schools and medical providers. Another thing that we incorporated into the safety element is this internal report that was completed by County of Ventura. It's the Community Emergency Access Assessment Report. So this provides a guide for continue enhancement of equitable emergency preparedness, response, and recovery. So like I said, it's an internal report that provides a lot more details on actions that are occurring within the county and what the different departments within the county are doing. So this report also includes a lot of information that addresses a lot of the commission's comments and concerns, again showcasing all the efforts that the county is doing. And the city's manager's office reviewed this report, and based on the report, some language was added in the safety element consistent with this report pertaining to coordination on emergency response. So now into how these feedback was addressed. In the setting of the safety element, we added further discretion of vulnerable populations. It starts really on the first page of the safety element. There's a short paragraph on the intro, and then it does a lot deeper dive on vulnerable populations right now. So it includes the overarching categories of vulnerable populations such as people that are exposed to high outdoor exposure, under-resourced individuals, individuals facing systemic discrimination, and individuals with chronic health conditions and health-related sensitivities. And it further breaks those down within those categories. And then we also add a discussion of school and medical facilities emergency response. A lot of this was pulled from the city's emergency operations plan, which we referenced, but we wanted to highlight more of that information and pull it in directly into the safety element. Also, under each hazard impact of the safety element, if it's wildfire or extreme heat or flooding, there is a specific discussion of the hazard impacts to vulnerable populations. So that was added. And then there was an added discussion of emergency response challenges for vulnerable populations. In the safety elements, goal, objectives, and policy section, we created separate goals for the drought, air quality, and extreme heat. We also added policies that describe coordination for effective preparation, response, and recovery of emergencies. So making sure that we're covering that whole spectrum. We also added a policy regarding the city's role in coordinating to ensure emergency notification systems are effective. And then we also added a policy that speaks to the city coordinating with medical service providers, schools, HOAs, businesses, and surrounding cities to ensure all of those have prepar- preparedness plans. Either they either have one or ensuring that they are preparing them. And then we also add policies for coordinating appropriate resources for vulnerable populations during emergencies, and another one specifically for the provision of personal protective So that is all for what we did within the safety element. And then these couple slides you saw last time, but again, showing how the safety element was reviewed. It was first reviewed by city staff in May of last year, then the Ventura County Fire Department in June, and then reviewed by the sheriff's office in July of last year, and City of Public Works in September, and then Cal Fire started their review process in October, and Cal Fire, the Board of Forestry approved the safety element in December. And so the next steps, since the Board of Forestry approved the safety element and called it a model for other communities to use, we brought it to the commission March 2018 this year, or sorry, 18, 2025 this year. And we're here today for recommendation to go to city council approval next month. And that is it for the presentation. Welcome. Any further Q and A or discussion? Thank you.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have questions or comments for the staff?
I don't.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes, I have one question, and it has to do with page 1166, Policy SAF 7.1I and 7.1J. It indicates working with community organizations to ensure response and recovery efforts and also to provide personal protection equipment. I'm wondering if somewhere in this document, community organizations are defined, and if not, what is, what is meant by community organizations? Are they churches, community service organizations?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and respond to that. Yes, it would be including organizations such as the ones that you mentioned. If it's the desire of the commission to include that additional language, I don't see there being an issue. The only thing is that because this is a policy, it would more specifically commit the city to working with those specific organizations. The way that it is right now, it's a little bit more broad, so the city could use discretion on the appropriate organizations that it would coordinate with based on the emergency.
Another point I'll add to is a lot of times why we don't include the specific names is because it's such a long-term policy document. And if sometimes if certain organizations aren't mentioned, then it can be outdated, and then it's harder to update if you're continuing to try to include the list. So a lot of times, that list of organizations is included outside the safety element.
I was gonna say, maybe as an example, Leisure Village, for a number of years, was listed under Red Cross for emergency room, you know, and used if needed, and we had COTS stored and such. I don't think we still have them. I know we haven't had a request later, but you know, that way, if it's vague enough to be mentioned, but it can change to the conditions, you know, throughout the city and what's available at the time. I don't know if that helps or not, but...
Yeah, well, you can always give examples in the context setting as well to showcase these are the types of programs that are currently in the city. You want to make reference to that.
Okay. Commissioner Murphy, were you referring to a description of the type of organizations? I didn't hear your question as referencing specific organizations or identifying them.
Right. When I read community organizations, it seemed pretty broad to me. And I understand that as you start listing, the list can go, can be quite extensive. But I think as an, you know, including a few examples with some sort of disclaimer note on there, that this does not include all of the organizations that...
Like including, but not limited to?
Including in this category, but...
Or such as, not...
Correct.
But not limited to. And you mentioned...
Such as, but not limited to, that sort of thing. So you have some sort of an idea of what, what we're talking about with, for community organizations.
Uh huh. And you mentioned faith-based organizations or service-based organizations. Were there any that you wanted to, else that you wanted to include?
No, there, I didn't have any in particular in mind. It was more to just add clarity to the document.
Commissioner Murphy, would be sufficient to, to state such as faith-based organizations and community service-based organizations, or do you think it would be helpful to name them specifically?
I think that would be sufficient if you included, you know, but not necessarily limited to.
Any other questions or comments?
I appreciate the, the inclusion of vulnerable populations. It's, having lived through the Thomas Fire and watched some of the challenges that we were faced with, with respect to evacuations and such, it's, it's a huge, it's a huge issue. It needs to be addressed, and I'm very grateful that it was done at such a deep level within the document. So thank you.
And I appreciate the efforts of your response to our comments at the last meeting. I think you addressed all our concerns pretty good. And then I agree with Tom, that would add clarification to just list a few of the resources, but state such as, but not limited to. And I think that would clarify it.
Yeah. I like that total phrase, as far as the such as included to, with a couple concrete examples.
Any other comments or questions on this item? Commissioner Murphy?
No, not for me. Thanks.
Yeah, I also just want to express my gratitude for your dedication to this, the updates. I thought they were very thoughtful and also timely. And I know there were, there were numerous, and just really appreciate that the document is, the element is much more comprehensive and it really reflects the broader need of the community and shows also collaboration. And so I appreciate the, the spirit of it as well, as like the additional plain language. And I think it's a much stronger element. So thank you again. Okay, are there any members of the public who wish to speak to this item? Okay, hearing none. Then any other comments from the staff? Okay, we will close the public hearing on this item. Any, just open for discussion of the commission? Commissioners?
I was just glad to see all of the changes and additions to it. And I read the first paragraph, and it says, so I thought, okay, then who's going to do this? And then I started reading the rest of them. And it's, you know, so complete and broken down for each item or each area that it made it really easy to understand and go through it and, and see who, where the specific help is going to come from.
So then what would be the appropriate thing to make a motion now to, to recommend it to the city council, but incorporating the suggestion of Commissioner Murphy and maybe have staff, staff approve that rewording and, and then we send it on to the council?
Are you so moved?
Is that so moved?
I would second that.
Great. Can we call for a vote, please?
To let, we, call for resolution first.
Call for resolution?
All right. So Resolution Number PC 2025-2, Resolution recommending the city council, to the city council, the approval of the safety element update of the Camarillo General Plan and adoption of the 2022 Ventura County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan and all future updates by reference into the safety element of the general plan in accordance with Assembly Bill 2140 requirements.
Thank you. And the motion was move by Commissioner Edsall, seconded by Commissioner Davidson. Can you please call for the vote?
Commissioner Edsall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davidson?
Yes.
Chair Lamont?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandermeulen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now reopen the public hearing on the next agenda item, which is under the landmark committees. The landmark committee's public hearing for Leonard Holmes committees, the landmark committee's public hearing for Lennar Homes Shoal Farmhouse Historic Landmark Designation. Do I have a report?
Thank you, Chair Lamont. This item will be presented by Rachel Purzel with RingCon Consultants.
How's that? Okay, thank you all for having me here this evening. Really excited to be presenting what will hopefully be your first landmark. Okay, the Shoal Farmhouse is located within the project area of RPD 195 for Lennar Homes. The Lennar Homes RPD 195 development is located at the northwest corner of Springville Drive and the 101 within the Springville area plan. It has a general plan designation of low-medium density residential and a zoning designation of residential plan development. The development is currently under construction, as I'm sure many of you are aware. It will eventually include 158 new single-family residences in addition to the Shoal Farmhouse. For a little bit of background, the Shoal Farmhouse is a one-story farmhouse constructed in the 1870s. It was originally located elsewhere within the boundaries of the former Shoal Farm, which is visible in the top photograph. Today, the house is sited near the intersection of Springville Drive and the 101 within the boundaries of the Lennar Homes RDP 195 development. Approved mitigation measures require that the house be rehabilitated and also landmarked. As we will discuss in greater detail in this presentation, the Shoal Farmhouse is eligible for listing as a City of Camarillo Historic Landmark. This is the proposed conceptual plan for Lennar Homes RPD 195. You can see the Shoal Farmhouse in the bottom right corner there. The environmental impacts of the development of the Lennar Homes RPD 195 were analyzed in an EIR in 2008 and also in a supplemental EIR in 2020. Both documents indicated that the Shoal Farmhouse is eligible for listing as a City of Camarillo Historic Landmark. The city's landmark criteria is included here for reference. According to past environmental documents, the farmhouse is eligible for listing for its association with the agricultural development of Ventura County and as a rare example of a late 19th century Italianate cottage in Camarillo. In addition to confirming its eligibility, the supplemental EIR included several mitigation measures to minimize impacts to the farmhouse, and they included the preparation of a historic structures report, landmarking of the building, and its rehabilitation in compliance with the Secretary of the Interior standards for the treatment of historic properties, which I'll refer to moving forward as the Secretary of the Interior standards. It's a mouthful. Just to give you a brief overview of the historic structures report, that was prepared in 2024 last year, and it pretty much guides the treatment of the farmhouse moving forward, and it was required by the mitigation included in the supplemental EIR. The report provides a comprehensive record of the history and development of the Shoal Farmhouse. It assesses its current physical condition, and it outlines appropriate treatment methods moving forward. The historic structures report determined that rehabilitation in compliance with the Secretary of the Interior standards is the appropriate treatment method for the Shoal Farmhouse. As opposed to the preservation treatment method, rehabilitation allows for the upgrade of historic buildings to accommodate contemporary use while retaining as much of its character as possible. In order to determine which portions of the building are necessary to retain, the HSR reviewed each element of the building, determined if that each of those elements were character-defining, assessed the condition of those elements, and assigned the, a priority to their preservation, and developed treatment recommendations for each element. It's a pretty comprehensive document. I hope that you guys all had a chance to review. Overall, synthesizing it down, the recommendations of the HSR included mitigating the building's structurally unsound conditions, stabilizing materials and structure for continued use as a single-family residence, stabilizing the exterior envelope of the building, and protecting and preserving significant character-defining features. Rehabilitation of the farmhouse, in addition to the installation of interpretive signage and occupancy permits for the Shoal House are required before occupancy permits will be provided for the final phases of the Lennar project. To ensure compliance with the Secretary of the Interior standards, Page and Turnbull, they're the firm that prepared the HSR for the applicant, will provide weekly updates to the city on the progress of the rehabilitation to confirm that it continues to comply with the Secretary of the Interior standards as required by the mitigation measures. The proposed project is categorically exempt from CEQA because designating the structure will serve to preserve it. And this is your suggestion, suggested action to find the project categorically exempt from CEQA, and to adopt a resolution recommending approval to the city council of a historic landmark designation for the Shoal Farmhouse located at 650 Edward Shoal Drive. And that is end of the presentation, but happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do the commissioners have any questions for the staff or comments? Questions? Commissioner Murphy, do you have any questions?
Yeah, just one. In reading through the 2019 Human Resource Assessment Report, the daily report, I found that report to be fascinating. I read, I did read through the whole document, and I liked the layout, the historical perspective, and the justification for the architecture in it. I thought it was, it was thorough and again, a good read. In that report, it refers to on page 35, I believe, that there are five-by-seven photos of the structure prior to moving. The interior of the structure, I believe, that will be available at some point, or perhaps are now in our library, in the Camarillo Library, and I'm wondering if those photos are yet available or when they will become available.
The photos are not yet available at the library. When they complete the rehabilitation, the representative for the developer has said that they, in addition to the pre-rehabilitation pictures, will also provide pictures after the rehabilitation, and once that's done, they will also include those pictures and send them to the library.
That's great. Thank you.
I do have one question. One of the pictures that were shown in your thing had a sort of an artist's rendering, and it showed all, everything was stairs leading to the house. When I was looking at the plans, it's very difficult for me to see if there are actual stairs. How do you, obviously with a historical structure, how do you balance that with ADA requirements for handicap access and things? It just struck me as I was watching it, because I hadn't, it hadn't occurred to me until I saw all these stairs.
Yeah, I believe there is possibly a ramp around the side. I'm not positive about that, but there are detailed renderings in there. But I will say that just having worked with a lot of historic buildings and upgrading them, it is a challenge, but there is a lot of guidance provided from the state and also the National Park Service, you know, regarding how to balance those two things, and that's really the intention of using the rehabilitation method versus something like preservation where you wouldn't be able to make those upgrades and still remain compliant. So with rehabilitation, the intention of that method is to really upgrade it so it can be used for a contemporary purpose and also maintain as much as you possibly can. So it's definitely a balancing act.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And I can also add that since this is being rehabilitated as a single-family home, it's not going to, it's going to meet the building code standards for a single-family home and not necessarily have to meet all of the accessibility requirements that, for example, a commercial building might have.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Commissioner Edsel?
Just my understanding, it's not going to be open to the public. I mean, it'll, they can view the outside and it'll have a plaque or something, but it's going to be a private home.
That's, that's correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Van de Mulen?
Onto the pictures that are being gathered on this. Will they put together an informational scrapbook-like for the owner that buys the house to have and always pass on with the house by any chance?
It's not required that they do that. The owner can view the photographs at the library, though.
Okay, because I know my grandmother grew up in Pacific Grove, and one time that I was up there, I got to go in, see the owner. He was working out in the yard, and he took me through the house, but he had been given a notebook that had been passed down with the house, and so like it even had a letter from my mother that was in there or something, but it was just really nice to have that to go with the house. And then I was just down at a garden dedication in Santa Monica for the Santa Monica Conservancy, because I have, had a very good friend that started the conservancy. So it was held at the first house that they put back together and moved actually to, but they did have some, they're using that as an office now, but they did have a booklet with the pictures, the before and after, you know, like in there for us to look at when we walk through. So to me, it's kind of nice to have a copy of that go with the house if they would consider that.
The applicant can definitely coordinate with the developer when they're, sorry, the future home buyer can coordinate with the developer and coordinate requesting some of those photographs if they wanted to.
Yeah. And then my other question was, it looked like if I was reading the plans correctly, it was a one-bedroom initially, but they are putting in, or bathroom, and putting in a second bathroom to bring it up to more of today's standards.
That's correct.
And moving.
Yeah, the interior, so the interior has a lot less what you would consider character-defining features. A lot of the character is defined by exterior features, although there are character-defining features on the interior of the building, they're much more limited.
Like, for an instance, are they, it mentioned they're taking down the old beadboard, beadwork? Are they going to be putting that back?
Yes, that's the intention. So basically, the rehabilitation standards state that you will retain as much original fabric as possible. So the plan will be to remove that, inspect, and reinstall if possible, and if not, replace in kind, and that is definitely the intention behind having the historical architect checking in and reporting back to the city to make sure that that's actually happening, because, you know, things on construction, you know.
You can't always get the same thing.
Yeah, it's difficult. There's a lot of like on-the-fly decisions that often need to be made, so that's the intention of having those folks involved.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I do, I do have a couple of questions and a comment. So can you clarify under which category it's being preserved? Is it under agricultural history? I saw a reference to that in there. Yes, it's, it's under, it's significant for its association with the agricultural history of Ventura County and Springville, and also for its architectural style as well. A pretty rare example, especially in Camarillo. I see. Okay, thank you. And I very much appreciated the detailed report. I love reading about history, and so it just was fascinating to read about the migration history from Germany and the multiple generations of the Shoal family who lived, occupied the home and surrounding homes. I couldn't get a very clear idea of like the full farm. I thought it was, again, fascinating to read that it was this farm that produced the first grain in Ventura County, is that right? So just wondering if the photos that are, will be archived in the library will include photographs of like the farm and anything beyond just the family home. I believe that the intention of the photographs is specifically to document the rehabilitation, so it's more before-and-after photos, like specifically related, but I do know that there are some historical photos that the Pleasant Valley Historical Society has, which are accessible to the public to some extent, but in terms of the library, the, what's being prepared by, in compliance with the mitigation measures, I believe the purpose is essentially to document the rehabilitation efforts. That makes sense, yeah. And then I read, and there's also a photo of another structure that was used as a kitchen or dining room or for laborers. Is there a reason why that structure isn't also preserved together with the home? So between 2008, so when the original EIR was prepared, in between the time the original EIR was prepared and the supplemental EIR was prepared, that additional building was, I believe it actually eventually fell down. It just was in such poor repair during that period that it was not salvageable, essentially. I see. Okay, thank you. Yeah, what, as I was reading through the history and thinking about the farm and the agricultural significance of it, I was thinking about the story here, right? Because the home and the family home is just like one part of the story, but it's the role of this farm that it played in the economy and the community as a whole, and I thought that the photograph and the information that was provided about that additional structure was interesting because it came, what brought to mind, was brought to my mind is the people who passed through that other structure, the laborers who maintained this farm and fed the community and were members of the community as well, right? And like, to me, that's the full story of this farm and of the Shoal family as well. Okay, great, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all right. And so now we'll take any questions or comments or comments from the public. Is the applicant here?
Good evening, Chair, and members of the Planning Commission and staff. Dennis Hardgrave, representing the property owners, and I'll make a couple of clarifications first and then discuss whatever, but first I'd like to say, this is really cool, enjoying this new room you've got. So it's great to be back here and out of the library, as nice as that is, too.
We're at the cutting edge here in Camarillo.
Pardon?
We're at the cutting edge here in Camarillo.
There we are. We have got a great, a great room. Yes, I am representing the original or the most recent property owners prior to Lennar, which as you recall is Rancho Associates and Ran Associates, the people who developed the westerly half, basically, of the Springville specific plan. And so the Lennar is a home builder who is building the 158 homes on the project, which we designed and your Planning Commission approved several years ago. So our role in this is Lennar's building the new homes, and they gave us the old house to restore, so we're taking care of that side of things. I do want to point out that, that to date, you know, you talk about those reports, they are exhaustive and they are really fascinating. The history of the house is great. Tonight, I'm sure we have a number of Shoal family members who are watching online, and they have a great interest in the house and what will happen to it going forward. We've had field visits with some of them. If you were at the street dedication ceremony recently, there were a large number of Shoals from California and Arizona that were here, so it was a very neat event, and in fact, we've gotten to know a number of them and are working with them to try to get other information on the house as we move forward and some of the history. We've, we've seen a few other pictures. There are a number of older photographs that do exist. Some are already with the Historical Society, and others will come out of the work that was done when we documented the house. The process for historical restoration, we had to use a qualified photographer to do the pictures as well, and they are actually not only going to the library, I believe they go to the County Historical Society and definitely to the Library of Congress. So it's pretty interesting, and they're all on glass plates. They are not a, you know, decalable kind of photograph. So it's a very expensive process from those first photos, and so there are pictures of some of the outbuildings that exist, and they're documented. We'll make sure that all of the reports that you have will get to the Historical Society, so that will all be a public reference or public resource. We can get copies to the library as well of everything when this is all buttoned up. But as far as the house itself, we are prepared to go into plan check. I think it was attachment five or four, yeah, attachment five are the rehabilitation plans. That is a building and safety submittal plan check set. That is a building and safety submittal plan check set, ready to go. Just for your edification, Page and Turnbull is one of the West Coast preeminent firms. And I know your director, Mr. Sanchez, is familiar with them from the Pasadena area. And the high standards that cities like Pasadena have for restoration is one of the reasons we went with Page and Turnbull. They were by far not the cheapest, but they were by far the ones we felt understood the character of what we were doing here. To date, over $250,000 have been spent on reports, plans, and even the earlier reports that went into the EIR. So we're prepared to file for plan check. We've done a zone clearance with planning staff this week. So our intention is to move ahead. The steps, and I'll just say this briefly to you, kind of what's ahead. The, after it goes through plan check, which is a remodel, interestingly, is that the foundation plan gets approved and then the house gets set down on its foundation, which is exactly where it was proposed to be on the tentative track map and the RPD approvals for RPD 195. And from there, the utilities will be hooked up and, or the stubs are already provided by Lennar for the house to be hooked up to sewer water and electricity and cable. And then from there, we will start the process, once we get out of plan check, of restoring the exterior, getting windows. There's a lead time with things like windows that have to be milled specifically for this house. But it'll be an interesting process and I am the one elected to walk it through that stage. And then at a certain point, we will put it on the market and probably leave it to a buyer to decide interior finishes, even though the plans do show all what we would do for, you know, the interior walls, relocations and electrical and everything else. So I hope that gives you a little idea of where we're headed. We're obviously in support of the work that RenCon and staff have done on this analysis and looking forward to going forward from here.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Murphy?
Yeah, thanks for that perspective, Dennis. Just wondering the overall timing for RPD 195, the remaining units, and where this would fit into, into build-out of this community?
The simplest part is actually, the part we can control, I don't know about the Lennar side and what their timing is. You can see the progress they're making, working out there. We do have neighbors across the street already living there. I've met several of them. I know a couple of them pretty well. I knew a couple of them from before, actually, the house. And one of them specifically said, I wanted to live across the street from this house. So our, what we can control is getting through plan check, getting it set on its foundation and starting the exterior and the roof process. Those are the ones we want to get done in the, in the dry season this year, right? So that's what we, you know, that's easy enough to do because it's not specialized spec windows and doors that we may have to deal with a local manufacturer in their timeline to make wood windows, which you don't find that many, you know. There's no stock wood windows like these sizes. So, so some of those other components will be what the trailing items are, but we'll be working closely. We have about three general contractors who we feel are qualified within the area to do this work. It's very competitive getting trades, so it's hard for me to say, you know, how that will go. But fortunately, the pieces here aren't imported, they're made here. So that'll make that part easier. So I can't completely address it, but our goal is to have the roof on and the wrapping of the restoration of the exterior walls during this dry season so the house is secured and probably all the interior walls moved. We can do that easily enough, too. Surprisingly, that dimensional, full dimension, old-growth timber that makes up the house is sound. We expected we were going to find all kinds of, you know, interior studs and roof joists that were going to have to be replaced, but the structural engineers have walked it and they said, you know, we've got some things to fix, but it's not like a wholesale retrussing this roof, which is pretty amazing when the story behind it, this kind of house and this era being built would have been that that timber got shipped probably out of Monterey because it was all harvested from the Big Sur area ironically. And it was shipped down to the, probably the Wainimi Pier or maybe the Ventura Pier. Those were the only two piers. So they, they wouldn't have brought timber overland of these sizes. It would have been, it would have been, it came down the coast on ships. And, you know, a lot of it's redwood, a lot of it's, you know, but it's not like we think of crumbly redwood, it's old-growth wood. So about the barns or the secondary structures, they were not of the, they weren't able to be saved and most of them did collapse or were collapsing. And the Historical Society has some wood from the house. We looked at trying to repurpose the yet-to-be-designed garage with some of that barn wood that was there, but it was not deemed worthy or, you know, suitable to actually build a new, build a new structure with that as a skin. So that's, that's why it's not there.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Any other members of the public who wish to address the commission on this? And I'm sorry, if you haven't yet completed a card, if you could please complete and submit a public comment card.
There is.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. My name is Gene Talmadge. I live at 5280 Fieldcrest Drive here in Camarillo. And I used to sit there, but that was another life. Anyway, I'm here, first off, in support of the adoption of a resolution recommending that the Sholli house be declared a historical structure for the city of Camarillo. Nothing could be better. I remember watching it and, of course, the building is falling down. As we heard earlier, the outbuildings. And I'm glad to see that the house is being restored. But I do have a couple of questions. Commissioner Murphy raised a question about a library. Was the library you were talking about in the house or separate library? I'm not sure.
I was referring to the public library.
Okay, public library, okay, fine. Because there's the Camarillo Historical Society that has a library of sorts and I wasn't sure where. But anyway, the rehabilitation of the exterior is, I think, predominantly imminent. And I was glad to hear tonight that it will be done this dry season. I've been looking at the house for years and the roof appears worse and worse as time goes by and so does the exterior. And there are no windows, I just drove over there before the meeting tonight. There are no windows at all and I'm afraid that something is going to get in there. There would be additional damage. And so I would encourage expediting the exterior renovation and at least making it weather-tight. I know that there are other processes that have to go through with plan check and whatnot for the interior, but the exterior, I would advocate very much that that be expedited. The reference that is California exempt from SEQA, I think is a little bit, I'm not sure you would call it exempt for this reason, unless it was already in a historic structure. It's not yet, so it's kind of hard to say. It's exempt because I think another clause ought to be used for exemption from SEQA. I concur that it should be exempt, but I question whether the, what is referenced here is the right citation. I would say more an existing structure than a historic structure. Anyway, one thing that I have seen in Ventura and other places is a good photo documentation.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, your time is up, but go ahead and please continue. Just finish your, this thought. The time is right up to the right.
I'm sorry. Good photographic essay of the property is important to establish what it used to be, what happened and what it's like today and with the future renovation to the property, that it be well documented and preserved historically by photographs. Because not always will the building be there, maybe 50 years from now or 100 years from now, but well documented.
Thank you.
What other historic properties are there in Camarillo?
Sorry, your, your time is up, Mr. Talmadge. Thank you very much for your time.
I'll ask later. Thank you very much.
But I noted your question.
Good to see you all.
Thank you so much for your time and your interest. I appreciate it. Anybody else from the public here to address this particular agenda item? Okay, seeing none, then I'll close a public hearing. Any other, well, does staff have any final comments in particular to, in response to the applicant's presentation or to the public comment we just received?
I will just say that this would be Camarillo's first historical landmark.
Mr. Talmadge, that's in response to your question, the first historical landmark. That's in response to your question about what other historical buildings are. Their response is that this is the first.
This would be the first designated historic landmark.
Great. Any other questions or comments for the staff?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that the library is the Camarillo Public Library that we've been discussing tonight, not the Library of the Historical Preservation Society. I think I made that assumption that it was our public library.
Yes, it is the public library.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I just had a question, is there any merit as a technical distinction on a SEQA? I mean, if we reverse the order of those resolutions, we would be doing number two first, adopting the historical landmark and then the first statement would be true then, wouldn't it? That it's exempt SEQA because of that?
It would, but it's my understanding and I also defer to our council that we first have to make the SEQA finding before then moving to, move for the recommendation. Yeah, but I, Justin, would you like to add anything to that?
Yes, sure, thank you. So the two resolutions are being presented concurrently. So I believe that the planning commissions traditionally has handled this with the project going first and then the SEQA going following. That planning commission is free to continue doing that.
That's very interesting. Okay, because this is considered a project and we need to first, okay, I'll defer.
Chair Limone, if I could make just a technical clarification on the SEQA exemption. The, the project, the building in question is considered a historic resource, whether it's designated or not by SEQA. That's frankly why we're here, mitigation for the Lennar Homes project. So the project is a resource and is eligible for this exemption.
Okay, great, thank you. That's helpful. Okay, seeing no further questions, no questions for the staff. We'll close a public hearing. Any discussion? No?
Call for a resolution?
Yes, will you please call for a resolution as a motion?
Resolution number PC 2025-4, a resolution of the Landmark Committee of the City of Camarillo recommending approval to the city council of a historic landmark designation for the Sholli farmhouse located at 650 Edward Sholli Drive.
You guys are motion?
I would make the motion and waive any further readings.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Can you please call for a vote?
Commissioner Edsall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davidson?
Yes.
Chair Limone?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vanderbeil?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, and our next item is director's report.
Thank you, Chair Limone. Brief report tonight, I just wanted to thank the commission for our inaugural landmark committee meeting. So it's exciting to move forward with that. And just let you know that for the next planning commission meeting, we have a couple items pending. So we expect to have a meeting on one or two items. And that concludes my report.
Okay, any comments by the commission? Great, hearing none, then we'll adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.